...for this year, for the heart in your day. These are the things to do, it's up to all of you. For the heart in your day. Your E L A will be a better place. A D M will be a better place for you and me. You just wait and see. For the heart in your day. 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 The springy planets spinning through space. Your garden, your harbor, your holy place. Golden sun going down. Gentle blue giants spin us around. All through the night. Stay till the morning light. Springy planets spinning through space. Your garden, your harbor, your holy place. The springy planets sun going down. Gentle blue giants spin us around. All through the night. Stay till the morning light. The springy planets spinning through space. Your garden, your harbor, your holy place. Golden sun going down. Gentle blue giants spin us around. All through the night. Stay till the morning light. All through the night. Stay till the morning light. The springy planets spinning through space. Your garden, your harbor, your holy place. Golden sun going down. Gentle blue giants spin us around. All through the night. Stay till the morning light.
Boys and girls, thank you very much. You sounded beautiful. And again, thank you to all the parents and families that came out tonight, or teachers for the support. We're gonna take a few minutes to break for our second presentation. So feel free to mingle, and then we'll start one more presentation tonight. Thank you. Hey, you good? Okay, alright. Where was he? Alright, everyone. We're gonna get started with our second presentation this evening. Alright. So, each year, on an annual basis, across the state of New Jersey, every district is required to report that about the state assessment results. And so, this is the annual meeting when we do that. And I'm very pleased to introduce our assistant superintendent, Mr. Patrick Higgins, who's gonna lead us through that presentation. Mr. Higgins, how are you?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out on a very rainy evening. I feel like someone who I've seen several times this week at various events. So, yes, we are looking at our state assessment, state assessment results from the school year 2018, 2019. These tests were taken in the spring. We're looking specifically at New Jersey student learning assessment for reading and for math. So, we're gonna take a look at all the different, the different scores that we received. We can kind of look at each building and look at each, some of the subgroups that we saw as well. So, first things first, test administration. Some of the feedback that we received last year about how the test was administered was more along the lines of positive feedback about moving the test as far back as possible. There's a large window that the state gives school districts in which to take this assessment. And some districts like to start it right away, get it done. Other districts like to push it back a little bit. So, last year, I know that the test was moved back further than it had been in previous years, and that was, we got some very positive feedback about that. Because it allowed the students and the teachers to work a little bit longer to prepare and to make sure that everything they needed to do was done prior to the test. Also, too, the test was coordinated last year so that everyone tested at the same times, so that they weren't staggered across one building and the other. We received positive feedback about that as well. When you do it the other way, when you stagger between buildings, the test seems to drag on for what seems like a very long time. And that's very emotionally draining on most of the people that are involved in the test itself, especially the kids. So, we also heard, too, some of the feedback we received last year about the administration of the test is that last year, students were not allowed to bring an independent reading book into the test situation. And teachers felt that really helped them focus and stay on task during the test itself. So, other things that we did, too, last year, to ensure we were ready for the test, an infrastructure trial was performed at each building so that we knew that our infrastructure was up to the task. The test, the test is online. How it works is that the test is cached in a local server, and then that server broadcasts the test out to the individual computers that the students use. You need to have a robust and very strong infrastructure in place in order for that to happen. So, the IT department tested at each building last year, and that performed well. So, they're going to continue to do that again this year. Also, this year, we have many new school test coordinators. So, we'll be doing a lot of training to help them get up to speed. The test itself has not changed much in the way of its administration. Last year, there were a few big changes in terms of the duration and the amount of tests that students had. But this year, we have new, some new people onboard. So, we'll begin that training after this evening. And I guess we'll start in the next few weeks, training those folks and getting ourselves ready. Because before we know it, we've added the, all the student data is due to the state in terms of like the enrollment and everything, but first week of December. So, we'll be starting this process very soon, once again. Okay. So, here are the numbers. There is a sheet, in case some of you didn't grab it. The slides are available on the front table over there. So, if you can't see the numbers very well, and you'd like to take a look, please feel free to do that. So, this is a lot. So, what you're looking at on this slide is our ELA scores for grades K through eight, or sorry, grades three through eight. You're looking at the breakdowns from seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen. The test is scored, you can, students can receive one of five score points. A one, a two, a three, a four, or a five. So, what this slide is telling you is what the breakdown was in each of these years of the percentage of students that got ones, twos, threes, fours, and fives in each grade level. It's a lot to look at. So, let's frame it a little bit better. So, in the last two columns to the right, what I, what we tend to do, what the state asks us to do in this situation, is to kind of analyze what are the shifts that have been made in this school year. So, in this case, we are looking at, the first column there that's highlighted is the change in levels ones and twos. So, the students that are scoring at the lower end of the test. What is the change over time for that particular area? In this column, you want to have a negative number. You're looking to decrease the amount of ones and twos that you have in this area. So, if you look at ours, in most of the areas, we decreased our ones and twos, which means they moved up. They moved to the right on this, on this chart, which is what we're aiming for in this type of assessment. The last column, though, tabulates the fours and fives. Fours and fives, a four is a passing score. It meets expectations, and a five exceeds expectations. So, we are looking to grow this number. So, in the first column, we're looking to decrease the ones and twos. In this last column, we're looking to grow the fours and fives. So, as you can see, in ELA last year, for the most part, both of those things occurred across the board, except for in the two small pockets. Right? This next one is our math. Same type graph, same type chart, K through, or sorry, three through eight. You're looking at scores of ones in seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, all the way to scores of fives in seventeen, eighteen, nineteen as well. And again, we analyzed those same two columns to look for trends. And we noticed here that we're looking for negative numbers again in the first column, and positive numbers in the second column. So, when we look at this, we, again, trends are, tend to jump out at us and tend to show us something. So, we go back to the previous graph, and we look at that. We can see in ELA, we moved quite a bit and look in the directions we wanted to move in. In math, it's telling us that we did move quite as much as we would like to. We didn't grow our fours and fives, and we didn't decrease our ones and twos in as many places as we would have liked to. So, I would take you, again, this kind of walks you through just for ELA. And so, when you're looking at this, what this chart is doing is comparing us to the state averages in each of the categories. What is the state average for grade three? Level ones, level twos, level threes, fours, and fives. So, again, to make short work of this, I look at these last two columns specifically. In terms of our pass rates, how do we compare to the state in fours, and how do we compare to the state in fives? And as you can see here, in every single area, the district outperformed the state, in some cases by a wide margin. So, this is ELA, and we're looking at pass rates here in fours and fives. Same thing goes for math. We're looking at the same chart. We tend to look at how our students do in terms of passing this in comparison to the state. And there's only a few instances in this graph here where the school district itself, each grade level, as a whole, did not outperform the state. And I'll probably start by talking about here. Eighth grade math, across the state, you notice, if you look at these level fours here, you notice like they're in the forties, thirties. And if you combine these two, the number goes into the fifties if you combine the fours and the fives. But if you look at eighth grade math, like the floor drops out. And that's, it's a very easy thing to explain. If you look at how Copeland does eighth grade math, or how any middle school in New Jersey does eighth grade math, typically, your algebra students or your geometry students start leaving the regular class around seventh, eighth grade. So, your eighth grade tests, all of your algebra students and your geometry students take these tests and don't take the eighth grade. So, you're removing a pool of students from that score pool. So, as you can see, across the state, the eighth grade math scores are considerably lower in average than the rest of the grade level math scores. That's a statewide phenomenon. How many kids participate in algebra and geometry? It's on a couple of slides from now, I don't know the exact number, but I think it is twenty-one geometry students and somewhere in the sixties with algebra. But I'll, the number will come up in the next couple of slides. Alright? So, now, we're gonna go grade by grade. So, this is ELA grade three, and each of the elementary schools is represented here. So, as you can see, we look at the state overall pass rate. So, everyone in the state that got a four and a five was a fifty percent for ELA. And if you look at our schools here, we tended to do very well. The students with four and five across the board. A couple uplift there at the bottom, but again, very close to what the state average is, and in most cases exceeding it. Yes, this is full number, this is everything. Okay? Fourth grade ELA, similar story. Pass rate in the state was a fifty-seven point four. And for the most part, our schools did well above that. Alright, and so, the elementary schools in fourth grade ELA. Okay? Fifth grade ELA. And again, we're looking for higher numbers to the right of every one of these screens. So, we're looking at every one of these charts. So, again, we're looking at a pass rate for the state of fifty-seven point nine. And we're looking at this column here. Each one of our schools easily exceeded fifty-seven point nine in fifth grade ELA. Highlighted by some very high scores here. And to the other schools as well. So, I think that's something to be celebrated right there, fifth grade ELA from last year. And again, some more celebrations, too, that we'll talk about. If you look at the state pass rate for each of these middle school language arts exams, six, seven, and eight, fifty-six point two, sixty-two point eight, sixty-three point eight. We are so far above that, which is a wonderful job that was done by everyone there, varying our pass rates in our middle school ELA. And now, we move to math. So, we're in math, grade three. And again, the state pass rate was fifty-five point one. And if you look at our schools there, very close in one spot, but we met it very easily in the other schools as well. Fourth grade math, the state pass rate of fifty-one percent. And those are our elementaries there. The numbers of fours and fives. If you're looking to do straight math across the board, the state gives us very rounded numbers. There are other, we could give you the decimal points played out, but for presentation purposes, which the state gives you rounded numbers to work with, so it may not equal numbers exactly. Yes?
For this data, do you target intervention for specific students? So, if the child's scored very low on math, what are you doing in the provided services in elementary and middle school?
The simple answer is yes. And I have a slide at the end where I'll talk about exactly the progress, the process that we're now undergoing in regard to that. But yes, the simple answer is yes. But it's not the only thing that we look at. So, here's fifth grade math as well. And you can see the state pass rate. As you notice, the state pass rate declines every year. You move up in math. It's a statewide trend, it's not just a global trend. But if we look over here, our schools did pretty well, very well, if we're comparing ourselves to that statewide pass rate. Our fifth grade students did very well in both ELA and math last year. District-wide. And here we are, middle school math. So, this is sixth, seventh, eighth grade math, and also algebra and geometry. And the pass rates are at the bottom, they're a little hard to see. But as you can see, we had pass rates that were in the fifties and forties for elementary school. In the middle school, those pass rates in math dipped considerably into the forty, forty-two, twenty-nine, forty-two point nine, thirty-one point two. So, you can look at this in a couple of different ways. First of all, in the, in fifth grade, or sorry, seventh, sixth grade and seventh grade, we are meeting, we're beating the state standard there. But as you can see, we're coming closer towards the mean there, overall. And then, when we hit eighth grade math, the state average is twenty-nine point three, so we're, well, we're, you know, eight, or eight points below that roughly. And then, when we move into our algebra, we are at ninety-three, a hundred percent. Our geometry students, a hundred percent of the students passed a four or a five last year, which is a very outstanding accomplishment for an eighth grade student to do.
What is the, so, is there algebra?
Algebra is forty-two point three statewide pass rate, and geometry is thirty-one point two. Those numbers, too, you have to take into consideration. Those are high school kids also taking those tests. There could be ninth, tenth, eleventh, or twelfth graders taking algebra and geometry. Because those are high school tests. So, you could have, our, our top math students take algebra and geometry. High school students, math might not be their strong suit, but they're taking the same exact test. So, that's why the average is much lower. Whereas, for middle schools, it's usually our top kids.
But the state doesn't have a, it was on state business, it doesn't have a grade average for math in the state.
Because they're separate tests. Right, yeah, but they would have to take another test. Sure, right. So, we also, when we look at our test results, too, I want to show you an additional, I'm gonna jump out of my slide in a second here. But I want to show you some of the other things that we look at, instead of just straight scores. We look at subgroups as well. We look at groups in our schools that are, how they compare to the overall population. So, two of the ones that we most look at are economically disadvantaged students, that population in the district. So, this is, the average across the board are the district averages in blue, and students that are economically disadvantaged are in red. And as you can see, there's a noticeable gap in most cases. So, like I referred to something, another slide that I'll jump to in a minute. But again, we do have some programs that target students that fall into this category. Additionally, these are our special ed numbers compared to the district as well. So, we look at how our subgroups are performing as compared to the overall population as well. So, when we do this, it begins to tell us a story. It begins to give us a plan of action that we need to take. And here's math for economically disadvantaged. And math for special ed. The thing with the test that these, that all of our students take, these are, the tests are in grade level content. So, if a child is working with a disability that puts them below grade level, the test doesn't change for that student. There are modifications that can be made to the test, but the content still remains the same. So, it becomes a significant struggle for some of our students to perform at a grade level that they just aren't prepared for at that particular time. So, global observations, we're looking at all this data. So, as teachers and as administrators in the buildings, we have access to a whole list of other data as well that we use to drill down even deeper into this. We can go, we can get information about individual students and how they perform in certain types of questions and in certain types of, you know, standards that they're being assessed on. But when we look at this, some of the things that we notice automatically, and I hope you noticed them, too. Growth in some places is really rapid in ELA across the border. Our ELA scores are really, they're really great. So, we have to ask ourselves a question. So, then, what do we do with that information? So, right now, as you've probably heard us say over the last couple of weeks and months, we're in the midst of a pretty big ELA revolution in terms of how we're doing balanced literacy K to five. So, not only are we already being pretty successful with ELA, we're pushing it even further by changing the way that we're doing things and by enabling our teachers to learn and grow in really fantastic ways. However, we want to also look at pockets where things are really exploding and see what's happening in those pockets and try and share that information across grade levels, even across buildings, as best we can. Additionally, you probably saw from looking at this that our math, math scores across the board were pretty close to the mean. If, in some cases, they might be below. So, we've got very interesting things going on in the district right now. So, in fifth grade, we are piloting two math programs. One's called Ready Math, the other's called Eureka Math. Both programs have unbelievable merits and amazing strengths. And the teachers that are piloting them are really passionate about how successful they are, they're being with these. Those things, those pilots, we will likely choose one of those going forward as a program that we'll push forward in our elementary program. So, we've addressed, we've been looking at how math is functioning, and we're, one of the big decisions we have to make is changing the materials that we use and the way that we teach. So, we're looking at that. Also, currently in our middle school, they've been doing an amazing amount of work looking at sequencing. The test, we have the advantage that these tests are released to us pretty soon after, the types of questions, the, what was tested, what were the major focuses of the test in each year. And so, our middle school has been taking that information and sequencing and looking at how they're teaching certain concepts, and if they should be teaching things in a different order. And then rearranging their sequence to match that, which is a really powerful thing. It's using the data that we have available to us to make smarter decisions about what our kids know and when we're gonna teach, and how we're gonna teach them throughout the year. Additionally, looking at those subgroups, it's easy to see that we have a lot of work to do in terms of closing gaps, achievement gaps in our subgroups. So, to answer your question, too, the one that asked earlier, we are making a big commitment to the intervention programs that we have available to us in the district. Through special ed, through RTI, and through Title I. We are, we've implemented universal screening tools across the grade level so that we can identify earlier and earlier if there are issues in students' learning and how they're learning, whether it be reading, whether it be math. We want to know as early as possible that there's something that they have a gap somewhere so that we can address it through either RTI, through Title I, or in some cases, through special ed interventions as well. So, we're looking at all this information, and we're trying to make decisions that will best help kids be successful as soon as we possibly can find an information app. So, you may have heard your kids talk about things like Acadience. This week and next week, they'll probably be talking about something called E C C B M. These are tests that are nationally normed and benchmarked to show us that either the child's doing perfectly, perfectly well, there are some gaps here and there, or the child really needs intervention on a very consistent basis. So, we're trying to learn as much as we can about our kids as early as we can. And also, lastly, Elba?
I just have a question, do you share the screening results with us?
We, the, most of the screening that we do, we use for our in-house educational purposes. But if you were to ask your child's teacher, absolutely. Everything, there's nothing that wouldn't be available to you.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, so this is this year's test schedule that we put up. This is on the district website, but I'll also put it, it's kind of hidden a little bit. We'll kind of put it in a more prominent place. But this is our schedule for this year, when we will be testing in J S L A and J S L A Science.
Alright, two questions.
Yes?
I have two sons who are going to make a request.
Yes? There's a process that you have to write a letter to refuse to take the test. At any point this year. Okay. Any questions from, from anyone in the audience?
I'll just repost it on.
Yes, yep, absolutely. I'll post this and the testing schedule all in the same place in the website. And maybe, maybe we should link it through news as well. Thank you all very much for your time. And if you have any questions, please send us a contact mail. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Higgins, for that, it was clear. It was understandable, and we really truly appreciate that intervention that you brought to the board. At this time, I'd like to open it up to public discussion, but before I do that, I need to read the disclaimer. During the course of the board meeting, the Rockaway Township Board of Education offers members of the public an opportunity to address issues regarding the operation of the Rockaway Township Public Schools. The board reminds those individuals to take this opportunity to identify themselves by name and address and to limit their comments to items listed on the agenda and/or items directly related to the operation of the school district. Issues raised by members of the public may or may not be responded to by the board. All comments will be considered and response will be forthcoming if and when appropriate. The board asks that members of the public be courteous and mindful of the rights of other individuals while speaking. Specifically, comments regarding students and employees of the board are discouraged and will not be responded to by the board. Students and employees have specific legal rights afforded by the laws of New Jersey. The board bears no responsibility. The Board bears no responsibility nor will be liable for any comments made by members of the public. Members of the public should consider their comments in light of the legal rights of those affected or identified in the comments and be aware that they are legally responsible and liable for the comments. May a motion, please, to open to the public. So moved, Mrs. Shields and Mrs. Brooks. Anyone who'd like to address the Board, kindly disconnect, sir. And we ask you to sign it so we can get this value under me in a minute. You can just state your name, your address.
My name is Tom Snyder, and I'm a seven hundred floor.
Thank you.
Can I begin?
Yes, please.
I've been asked tonight to, uh, at Rockaway Township, a representative for Rockaway Township, Bus Drivers Association. And I've been asked to present some points and, uh, some topics that we feel are important and relate to our business with the township and also the overall bus drivers in Mars County. Firstly, I'd like to point out, what I'd like to make, and address some is that I'm very pleased to be able to say to you people that communities and association are fulfilling our obligation to you. We're out there every day making sure that we're providing quality service and that we're taking care of our children and they have a safety guard. We're doing this without contract and we're doing it without direct negotiation with the Board. It's also pretty common knowledge that in New Jersey, they have a shortage of bus drivers throughout the state. And it's no difference here in Rockaway Township. At one time, we had approximately fifty drivers, we're now down to thirty-seven. And before the end of the year, we anticipate losing two more. The starting salary here in Rockaway Township for a bus driver is nineteen dollars an hour. It's one of the lowest in Mars County and we receive absolutely no medical benefits. In comparison, the Mars, Mars Hills Regional High School bus drivers, who, if those are our expertises in this field, come to us for training. Our members, we have several members that do the training for us and they do it from Mars Hills. These people receive thirty dollars an hour, full medical benefits, and a guaranteed six-hour day. The average day here in Rockaway Township for us is three point five hours. And then they'll start to drive us out at twenty-four dollars an hour, and then they'll still have a problem finding drivers. With my understanding that they're beginning to do contract workouts for private companies, which can be, you know, expensive and it's also a little bit hard to drive them to get. Here's just some direct facts. What I'd like to go into now is quality of service. As I already said, we at the Rockaway Township Bus Driver Association are committed to fulfill our obligation to you which are the students at Rockaway Township. Most of us live here in Rockaway Township. Over the years, we have done volunteer work through fire department, we have retired police officers, and we have people whose children are in the system or have gone through the system. We're not just people that come from the outside with bus drivers, we are living in the community. In contrast, many companies have drivers and vehicles pulled from service because of DMP violations or driving illegally. Many times the drivers are pulled from their vehicles because a DMP does its full stop, which means they want to open up a detention, they don't have the full driver right on the bus. Just doesn't care with us. And again, we are committed to providing the best, best service we can provide. However, as the number of qualified drivers shrink, the stress levels and the inability to provide quality service is also rising. Runs are being combined and children are running off. Buses are becoming fueled near capacity, creating greater stress on the drivers. Lack of backup drivers for either filling in for when drivers are out or just to stand by in cases of emergency, we have someone there and another bus that can do respond, it's become a problem. And this is also putting stress on the drivers that are there full-time. It's not full-time, but they're there all the time because now they have to pick up the slack. That's created because of lack of drivers. Current recruiting activity does not seem to be working. We're losing two more, two more people and we don't see anything on the rise of providing, being able to bring in new drivers. And not just new drivers, but new drivers of quality. By quality, you've got new people that are expected to us. Finally, another thing that's, that's come to mind for the loss of drivers is that we provide, as you're probably aware, out of district bus services, learning to schools in the area. And it's a nice thing, it's a good thing in my mind because it produces revenue for Rockaway Township and also gives the bus drivers an opportunity to make more extra money. However, we don't have overtime, we don't get double pay, double time, time and a half. Whatever your salary is, that's what it is. Nineteen dollars an hour, you get nineteen dollars an hour if you're out there eight hours on a Saturday. And because of that, it's my understanding that because of the lack of drivers, we're unable to actually take advantage of the opportunities that are being presented, we're turning work down. Which means less revenue for the township and less opportunities for us to, to make returns and jobs. The Rockaway Township Bus Driver Association believes in that. As I said, we're, we're, we're not just working here, we live here. And we're committed to making it the best possible place we can for the kids. We want to be able to provide quality service all the time, but we want to make sure that the kids are safe all the time. But we can't do that without your help. When it comes to school, school business, you people are the community leaders. We are your ambassadors every day. We're out there with the children every day, taking them to school, bringing them back to school, dealing with them the same as many teachers deal with them in classrooms. And with very little training, we do special ed kids, very little training, but we're still committed to it, to providing a high quality service. But we can't do that, we cannot achieve these goals without you. You are our community leaders, we are part of your community. Work with us. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who's interested in support, please? Ready, bus break, eleven, nineteen, midway court. Bus vehicle, one, two, three, four. Thank you. Is that good? Okay. I'm gonna read, so I apologize because I'm looking now. I want to take a minute to talk about the lack of consistency and, 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 lack of consistency and lack of individualized services within our special education program. I first became involved with special education services when my now eighth grader was in second grade. Actually, our initial request for evaluation was kindergarten and then again in first. When he began to receive services until the end of second grade, after he was involved in a physical altercation at school. That was when someone finally decided to look past the standardized test scores that knew the whole child. That brings her unsettling as a parent, when the child desperately needed help with critical time in his emotional and educational growth. Eventually, I got past the anger and the delay and I was grateful for all the services that we were given. Over the next four years, my son continued receiving services and he flourished through his elementary years. A big reason why these things were successful was he had consistency. He had the same case manager, he had the same social worker, he had the same counselor for all three years. These people got to know him, they had a vested interest in him. There were pickups, but that's to be expected. Towards the end of his fifth grade year, we were appointed a new case manager and a new interim director was brought in. We had a meeting to discuss the upcoming transition to middle school. We were told that services would continue as is because we were back at a critical time. Two months later, our case manager went out on leave and we were told by a new case manager that our son was being classified. I won't get into the details in the next year because I'm really not sure we're allowed to discuss or not, but let's just say his sixth grade year was a waste. He was covered under an IEP that was last updated in the fourth grade and it had no correlation to a sixth grade day. He also had a rotating door of shared aides throughout the year. And because of what we were told is district policy to not hire full-time aides, he would have two different aides scoring each day, some of which he didn't even know were names. Towards the end of sixth grade, we had yet another case manager and a new director of special ed services. Back to square one. During seventh grade, we moved him into a self-contained classroom because we were told that was his only option to get the consistency that, consistency that he had in elementary school, that one-on-one support. So for us, it wasn't the least restrictive option, it was the only option. During seventh grade, another director was brought in. In hopes of putting all my angst aside, starting off on the right foot, I met with the new director. I spent an hour explaining my son to her. She listened eagerly and attentively. She agreed to set up meetings, turned me proactive in this case. Months later, she's on and I'm here, we need to meet in the morning. My concern for consistency doesn't end with administration. In the two and a quarter years that come, we've worked with so many different school psychologists, counselors, case managers and social workers that we often didn't know who was supposed to be providing services and when. Once we actually had an IEP, I don't think we were ever with the same group of people twice as much. Once we actually had an IEP team member say that even though she had not met our son or read his file, she felt he didn't need any services. In another instance, it was recommended that a service be discontinued because the service provider stated she tried and just couldn't get through it. I know that turnover and senior administration is not something the Board can perceive. And I know it frustrates you just as much as it frustrates us. But there has to be a way, a better way. In seven years, we had several interim or permanent directors of special ed. It's just counterproductive and consistent progress. I also know that employing aides that are qualified and those that will stick around is tough, but their revolving door is purely exhausting. While I'm quickly running out of time for my eighth grader that is starting to mull over the prospect of high school and begging to make it right for the students and parents that come after us, consistency has to be a priority. Anyone else wish to address the Board, please, come up? If you'd just sign in, please?
Hi, I'm Tim Murphy, one eighty-eight Paris Street.
Thank you.
I live in Birchwood Village. Um, I'm a bus driver also. And I don't know what I can say after this. Tom said everything, basically everything. And we're losing, I'm concerned, we're losing bus drivers for different reasons. A lot of it's just, we can't get new bus drivers because we start at nineteen. I pay Mars Hills, I personally pay the Mars Hills drivers thirty dollars an hour and with health benefits. And, and I pay me way less than that. Um, you, you understand the point. I don't understand why anybody would come work for us when they can go there. Or Ranoff, a couple of people I know that live in Birchwood have transferred to Ranoff and they're making the low thirty dollars an hour. It's like, there's, it's, we're not, and like Tom said, we're losing drivers. And why would anybody want to work here? And we have kindergartners as opposed to the high school. Kindergarten, high school get you, they get on bus to get off. Kindergartners, we have to make sure they're in seats, we have to make sure a parent's there, we have to, I'm not saying babysit, but then, look, kindergartners, they don't talk, they scream at each other, they, they, they yell. And it's, it's one of those, I don't know. But anyway, I, I can't really add anything to what Tom said, but I don't know how we're gonna keep up. And my, uh, my boss even asked me if I know anybody that wants to work here. And then maybe I do, but then you have to have good eyesight, you have to hear, you have to pass every, the test is really difficult, the driving. It's not easy to become a bus driver. The background check, the, you have to be clean. And, uh, I don't know, and if I'm all that stuff, which I am, I don't know why I'm here. And not at Mars Hills. I could walk, I went to Mars Hills, I could walk to Mars Hills. I don't know, well, coworkers in my sense, especially in recent years. I, that's about it. And, uh, I did, I signed in right earlier, that's why.
Thank you.
I already signed.
Thank you. I appreciate that, thank you.
We are from Detroit. Okay, this is Rebecca Villarreal, sixty-seven Circle Drive. And this is gonna sound familiar because much like that gentleman, there's not much more that I can say to add on to what Leslie just came up and spoke about, but, um, similar to another time that I came up here, I really just want to underscore the importance of, you know, what she's saying and with concerns with special education in general. Um, you know, I know that tonight you're voting on creating a new position, um, to help support and for Dr. Turgeneon, Turgeneon to, um, to step in and assist on the director level with the special education program. Um, but I'm concerned that about both of you having full-time positions within the district already. I mean, how are you going to be able to provide the support that's needed? And where's this program going to be in here? I mean, have we advanced at all in, you know, throughout all of these changes that have been happening with the program? And who's suffering? We saw the test scores, so it just, it's sad. And I think we're kind of starting to get tired of having the same conversation. So I don't know if, I don't know if, obviously, whether or not you can address that or not, but there are concerns about what's, even until higher, our new, uh, director. What's gonna happen?
Thank you, thank you Rebecca. If you'd like to respond, I'm liable to, pardon?
I'll use the secretary.
Okay.
So thank you for your questions. I would like to take an opportunity to ask you, thank you. No, that's fine. It was correctly stated, the Board agenda tonight, appointing myself as acting director of special education. We're also creating an acting supervisor position for special education. This is a temporary arrangement. Um, it's partly driven by my desire to not introduce another new face into the role of an acting role that the community doesn't know. Um, that's part of the decision to do it this way. The reason to add the acting supervisor role is also the reason to add the capacity to that department. Um, and the person that's moving into that position will have additional supports put in place, um, taking things off of their current responsibilities so they can take on more responsibilities. And it's also a person our team and community know, so that was an important factor. I want to give you a few other assurances though. Our search is underway. And to the earlier comments about how, very appropriate questions. How do you identify someone who you know will make a long-term commitment to our community? Something our community deserves, um, and something that we as administration in probing through interview processes can identify certain traits that certain candidates have. And we will and are prioritizing experience in this role. The idea that they demonstrate loyalty to either this or other communities in their work, demonstrating high levels of integrity are all things that a successful interview process can grow for. I can share with the community, the interview process that we're undertaking is gonna be three steps. We're finishing the first stage early next week and we'll then do callbacks for round two and then there will be a round three. All of that, I share to say we are on track. Our goal is to have our final candidate identified before the end of this calendar year. So we're targeting that December board meeting ideally. That doesn't mean the candidate would be onboarded by Jan-, January of twenty twenty, but the person would be known and identified by that point and a transition plan created. And then also want to give assurances to the community that our CSD teams are fully staffed and they're staffed with highly skilled veteran members of the team who know our community very, very well and have demonstrated a great deal of loyalty to our community. So those are other things that are playing out in all of these different decisions. And I share the concerns and the very appropriate concerns about the lack of consistent leadership in that role in recent years. Um, and it is a top priority for me to solve for that candidly. And there's one other piece of work stream that I'll update the community on that actually played out significantly today. And I've reported out about this in previous, uh, reports. We have contracted with a third-party consultant to come in and review all of our special education services. That review is on track. They were in district today, they conducted a host of interviews. Families, CSD members, principals, staff members, myself, other central office leaders. Um, and we're on track to have that final review completed by January. The reason that timeline is important is because you have that review completed by January, you have a new leader coming into a role with those recommendations in place. It prepares them to hit the ground running. So we're not in any type of a holding pattern. And I would be remiss to not also identify all of the other new initiatives that we spoke about. They're not new initiatives in isolation of special education. They include special education. Universal screening, balanced literacy, all of those things have a positive ripple effect across all of our programs and services. Um, and they are things that our teachers are extremely, extremely committed to and have been hard at work at since day one of this school year. So there are positive things that are happening, a lot of things that are on the move. The community is right to be concerned about that lack of consistency. And I see this, my and I see this as my responsibility to ultimately solve for that. So I hope that helps. Thank you.
I also, I also, excuse me, this is not, one second, please. Yeah, one second, please, thank you. Leslie, on behalf of the board, and I know you said it, you said it when you were up here speaking, and I know that Rebecca, you more or less reinforced that. We share as board your frustration, the community's frustration. But honestly, and I'm not gonna go back and rehash what's happened, so much has truly, truly been out of our control, and we're doing our best to move forward, and we're headed in that right direction. So I just want you to know that it's, it's true, I can feel what you're saying, so thank you very much. Okay? Now, if you'd like to, I'm sorry, if you'd like to speak, please come up. Sign in, please. Your name and address, please.
My name is Laura Prusell, the ninety-sixth overall out there.
Thank you.
I did not plan on coming to the board meeting tonight, I just wanted to be on the CPAC meeting. My husband got stuck a word late, and I arrived at seven oh five, and the consultants were naked. The advertisement was six o'clock to seven thirty. So I did not have a chance to talk to them. And so I felt, I felt like an hour and a half wasn't enough time anyway. We have students, we all have different students with different concerns. I have two children with dyslexia and AVH, and I know other people have other problems. So are we gonna get another chance to talk to the consultants before January?
I'll turn that, CPAC is not a board, a committee, so I'll turn it over to Dr. Tan.
Yes, before you leave tonight, if you can just make sure I have your contact information, I'll connect you directly with the consultant, who'll be happy to conduct a phone interview.
Okay, thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the board? If not, mad motion, please, the close to the power. So vote Mrs. Shields.
Second.
Mrs. Smith. Moving on to communications, please. Any additional communications, Mrs. Karlov?
No, there hasn't been.
Okay, moving on to approve the minutes, approve the minutes of October second, two thousand nineteen. Mad motion, please. Mrs. Cherico?
Second.
And Mrs. Brooks. Roll call, please. Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherico?
Yes.
Mrs. Hellborg?
Yes.
Mrs. Mezek?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Stone?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to the superintendent's report, Dr. Tan.
Hey, thank you, good evening again, Rockaway Township. I'd like to begin my report tonight by welcoming to our community two new class-three officers. Brian Keen and Dan Haber are completing the final phases of training and plan to be in place in our schools next week. Once they are onboarded, one class-three officer will be placed full-time at KDM, and the other two will split time between the other four schools. We appreciate, we appreciate the township and police chief's partnership with getting this added security for our schools, and we are continuing to recruit actively for two more officers. Thank you to all of the community members who came out on October third to participate in the first strategic planning community forum. Earlier today, we blasted out to everyone a four-page summary of the event. I will host a second strategic planning community forum on October twenty-eighth here at the Copeland Cafe from seven to eight thirty P M. All are welcome. PCG representatives spent a full day in our community today conducting interviews of CSD members, teachers, principals, central office leaders, and families. The special education review being conducted by PCG is currently on track, and we anticipate it finally recording by the middle of January twenty twenty. I am pleased to share we are ready to launch a Copeland Boys and Girls Basketball Team this year. Trial outs are scheduled for November fourth and November sixth, and the board agenda includes our new head coaches and site manager. I would like to thank Michael Bernstein, William Sweetie, and Scott Cridio for filling these new roles. For anyone interested in learning more about the launch of our basketball program, please visit Copeland's website. I would like to take a moment to acknowledge the efforts of all of our educators this past Monday during our first full day of in-service professional development for the nineteen-twenty school year. With the various new initiatives launched with the new school year, staff in all grades and roles were highly engaged in professional development in support of these initiatives, as well as providing us with critical feedback about how some initiatives may need to be adjusted. The feedback continues to be super helpful, and I want to encourage our staff to please keep sending feedback our way as it will continue to shape the design of our programs. Lastly, I would like to thank Mr. Higgins for hosting a parent forum on Monday evening about our new standard-based report cards in grades K through five. The presentation was very informative and interactive. If you were not able to attend the forum, you would, you are more than welcome to learn more about the standard-based report cards initiative on our website where the video of the event is recorded. And that concludes my report.
Could you share where the video is posted? Where is the link to that video?
It is, when I looked today, it was under news and, news and highlights are right down the middle. So if you go under the Twitter, Facebook, Facebook.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions for Dr. Tan? Not, we're announcing this special education report, Mrs. Karlov.
Thank you. Good evening. I spent a very productive morning on October ninth with two representatives from our newly appointed architect of record firm, Land Associates. We visited several schools in the district and discussed what we saw as immediate needs and what we wanted to accomplish when we move forward. I will continue to report as plans move forward for district projects. As many of you know, the clear coating on the gym floors in three of our schools have failed and the finish is chipping away. In an effort to utilize green products, this is the first year that we use this product on the gym floors. We contacted our janitorial supply company who put us in touch with the manufacturer. They came out to look at the floors and decided they needed to bring in one of their specialists from out of state. Upon viewing the floors, he took some samples and promised to get back to us shortly. Although it took a little longer than we had hoped, we were advised not to not reapply the project, the product, as they felt it was a problem with its production and that they would repair the floors for us free of any charge. They are not only going to apply several coats of product, they are going to completely sand and re-strike the floors. This type of project is normally done once every ten years to the gym floors due to its high cost. We will have three schools done for us completely free of charge. Looking at the school calendar and keeping in mind that we would need to close each gym for at least ten days while repairing the floors, we decided to ask them to hold off the repair until school ends in June. While cosmetically the floors will not look their best until they are repaired, they are fine to be used as is. We do not want to interrupt any phys ed programs as well as the rec programs, so just got to know. Thank you.
Any questions for Mrs. Karlov?
Good job.
Thank you. It's not, Mr. Higgins, you're on again.
Good evening, members of the board, and hello, Rockaway Township. To continue Dr. Tan's update on standard-based report cards, this week I was fortunate to speak to groups of parents twice regarding the standard-based report cards and the process that we're using to make the transition. On Monday night, we were here at Copeland where we have a community representation for many of the elementary schools. The presentation was recorded, and as we stated, it's available on the website. We communicated our process for rolling out our new report cards and provided our rationale for doing so. On Tuesday, the presentation was repeated at the KDM PTA meeting, and we were able to answer specific parent concerns and clarify that process once again. Over the course of the next month, we plan to attend each of the elementary PTA meetings to discuss this transition. The process is kind of outlined as follows. During the November teacher conferences, parents will receive three documents at the conferences. You'll receive something called the district performance indicators, which are like a benchmark backup for the report cards. You will receive a data dashboard that has up-to-date information about your child's performance on our universal screening assessments. And you'll also receive a standard-based report card template that the teachers will kind of walk you through. Then for January, at the end of marking period two, that would be the first time our standard-based report cards in grades K through five will be rolled out. We look forward to seeing more parents attend the PTA meetings in the next month, and we hope to answer any questions they may have. October fourteenth was our first professional day of the school year. Monday was for staffing in the district. A full day of learning and articulation was planned. Our K through five grade-level teachers all met as groups and articulated around set topics related to our current initiatives. And Copeland faculty participated in a full-day workshop on restorative discipline practices led by Rutgers University's Lee Rush. Each department in the district was able to either get together as a group or focus on a meaningful topic that pertains to helping them do their specific job in a more efficient way. We are currently collecting feedback from the day to help us better serve our faculty and staff's learning meetings throughout the year. We would like to extend a measure of gratitude to those teachers that led and facilitated groups throughout the day on Monday. Their contributions in leading and contributing to discussions that day continue to help the district move forward. Listening tour. For the last week or so, I have been on my listening tour to each of the elementary schools. During this time, I was able to meet so many wonderful people and hear about their experiences within the district. Some I spoke to were longtime veterans of the district, while others were brand-new to the district. I took copious notes and was able to answer some immediate questions that people had about future planning. All in all, it was more than worthwhile to participate in a listening tour.
Thank you. Thank you. Our, please for Mr. Higgins.
Just a comment, I would refer parents in the audience of elementary school students, I would just really recommend going to your next PTA meeting and listen to Mr. Higgins give this presentation. I mean, I've heard it a few times now, but it was still enlightening in hearing other people's comments and feedback. It's really worth, you know, that or on your next meeting to go to.
Anyone else? If not, moving on then, recommended for board action begins with personnel, beginning on page four. Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped over committee reports. Committee reports, why would you do that? This is, this is, I'm sorry, that's a mistake.
Okay, so the policy committee met on October eighth from five to six fifty P M. In attendance were Nancy Sharco, Lisa Sue Salmy, Lisa Mezek, and me. We reviewed policies zero, one, five, five board committees, which is recommended for a first read tonight, and it has the regulation, and I'll share more information when we actually talk about policy. And second policy that we discussed was one, six, four, two, the earned sick leave law. We recently approved this, it does not require additional revisions. However, we needed to use it to help us provide responses for the regulation that it will also be up tonight for a first read. We discussed as well policy three, one, five, nine, teaching staff members, school district reporting responsibilities, and that's as well recommended for a first read tonight. There is no regulation required. In addition, we discussed policy four, two, one, nine, commercial driver's license, controlled substance and alcohol use testing. We still need more discussion regarding that, and so that'll be to be continued in our next meeting, and no regulation is required for that. We also reviewed regulation one, six, four, two, earned sick leave law, which is mandated, and this regulation must be adopted by the board, so therefore it's up for a first read, recommended for a first read this evening. Some of the recommendations for the next meeting, which will be occurring on November twelfth, two thousand nineteen, at five P M, are that we take a look at the policy and write the audit, and we have a discussion regarding that, summary, updates, statutes, so that the policy committee can determine a plan of action. We are also going to take a look at any policies and regulations that we didn't get to cover on the previous agenda, and we'll carry those over. That includes regulation zero, one, five, five board committees. We will also focus on any missing mandated policies that were identified for the audit. And we can also take a look at, or may take a look at, any recently updated regulations as Dr. Trennian has made some great progress on either creating or revising at least twelve regulations since July first, but I might be under.
Well, I don't know.
Thank you. Thank you. And the other committee reports, Mrs. Brooks.
Operations would like to schedule a meeting.
Okay. So that would be now, Mrs. Shields, Mrs. Holley. Do you have a date in mind?
Mrs. Karlov and I are looking at October twenty-ninth as a date.
That's fine, I would have to ask the alternate to go in my place. That would be, that date I cannot make. That's a Tuesday, correct?
We can move into the Wednesday, thirty, it's one.
I can make the thirtieth, but I don't know if that's a problem. But the twenty-ninth, I know it's just not a problem, the alternate would have to go. And what time would that be?
It's six thirty, seven forty, I guess. It's four twenty-five, that's about, like, four thirty.
You're over the limit, it's fine. That works for Mrs. Karlov.
Four thirty.
Four thirty? That's the board office, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Excellent. It's ten thirty and four thirty, thank you.
The board negotiations committee also met by itself this past Monday to, to discuss more information about the pending, the bus driver negotiations. I can tell you that we, as of today, a letter was sent coming up with more dates. The dates, finding common dates doesn't seem to be a problem with the board or the bus drivers. It's more involved with the mediator. It is our hope that we can resolve this sooner than later. You have our word on that one. So stay tuned, and more information forthcoming when it can be forthcoming. Any other committee reports?
I am. This is Hellborg. The education committee met on Monday.
Okay.
At four thirty at central office, and we discussed the writing curriculum, which is also on our agenda, it's recommended for approval. This, the curriculum focuses on the demand of writing. That includes interpreting several pieces of text. It's a shift, and it shifts towards the reader's workshop, which is going to take some time with PD over the next year. But this is the beginning coursework, beginning structure, I should say, that will lead to this. We should have later on. We also discussed curriculum dates for math, library literacy, and music. We got preview of the presentation tonight from Mr. Higgins regarding the standard-based test scores. And we also received a preview of the standard-based report card presentation. My one takeaway from this presentation, I was there on Monday night, and as a parent, the two things that really stuck out in my mind was first explaining what a four, three, two, or a one equate to. A three is where your child should be in terms of the standard. Four is, is going to be a rare thing, and a lot of people will say that four is the A. It's not, we're not looking at the A anymore. We're looking at where they are in terms of the standard at the grade level that they're currently in. I believe it's a more accurate picture of what our trials, our children are capable of doing. And then the second thing that I had to take away with was his analogy with the bicycle. I absolutely loved it. I want to make sure I get it right. Right, right, so, okay. Yes, okay. The analogy, it's at the bottom, my glasses. So the goal, this would be like a standard, is to learn to ride a bike by yourself. So a four would be you can pop a wheelie. That's like rare, that's above, you know, for a child. A three was your child could ride the bike by themselves. That's our goal, we want them to be able to be independent at that level. A two would be you need assistance, maybe somebody holding the wheel, holding the back to get started, maybe starting with your feet, you push, and, you know, there's, it's not a completely independent skill for the child, they still need some kind of assistance. And then a one would be like training wheels. So I really love that analogy, and I think that stuck with the parents, and it was a very good visual. Because it's, because when you talk about standards, everybody like, their face goes like, what? Like, what are you talking about with it? But everybody can relate to riding a bike, and I think you need to stick with that, because it was really well received. I, I, talking about it, so I was like that, so. And the last thing, he gave us an update through the RTI. And with the RTI, within the RTI process, he is, Mr. Higgins and the RTI created a criteria for the entry and exit of the academic intervention program, and have helped clearly define the tiers of intervention, understanding that it's the upside-down pyramid, please correct me if I'm wrong, where more services at the bottom, and the whole idea is to move the child back to where they're supposed to be, and then the services kind of narrow up as they move through the grades, and that's really the goal, is to get the child independent, get them to back for it at that level. So it was, it was, it was a great meeting, it was a great presentation the other day, and I would definitely recommend everyone go to their PTA meeting to hear about it firsthand and ask questions.
Bring it out, I love the bicycle.
Love it.
Great analogy.
It's perfect, it's perfect.
Any other committee reports? I think that exhausts all of our committees, actually. We've done them all, so we can move on then to where I was before. Moving on then to recommended for board action. Personnel is the first section. It begins on page four. Personnel is the first section. It begins on page four, it ends on page seven. There will be no public discussion as allowed by law. All discussion is held in executive session. So may I have a motion, please, on page seven?
Still moved.
Mrs. Brooks?
Second.
And Mrs. Smith. Please note that for number three, we'd like to add the word grant-funded at the end. So the Girls on the Run coach is being funded by a grant. So with that modification, may I have a roll call, please? Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Chirico?
Yes.
Mrs. Helford?
Yes.
Mrs. Messick?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Souney?
Yes.
Motion passes. Moving on to HIV determination. Dr. Chenamian?
Yes, we discussed the two determinations this evening and updating more about that till we go down.
At the next.
At the next meeting.
Thank you very much. Moving on to education, beginning on page seven, ending on page eight. May I have a motion, please?
Still moved.
Mrs. Shields?
Second.
Mrs. Chirico? Board discussion. If not, I can open to the public if anybody has any questions or comments about education. They're being on roll call, please. Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Chirico?
Yes.
Mrs. Helford?
Yes.
Mrs. Messick?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Souney? Yes. Motion passes. Special education at this meeting, there are no motions. Moving on to administration, beginning on page eight, ending on page nine. May I have a motion, please?
Still moved.
Mrs. Brooks?
Second.
And Mrs. Shields. Board discussion.
I have a question.
Sure.
What's a dulcimer?
Uh huh.
It's like a, like a straight.
Could I ask a question as where that donation came from? Like, who donated the nineteen dulcimers? Do we know?
I don't have that information. I'm sorry.
Whoever donated them, could we get a letter of appreciation? I'm sure if not already, we'll make sure that happens.
Yes.
Thank you very much. If you could update the board at your next update, that would be appreciated. And Mrs. Brooks, make sure you know how to play one at the next meeting.
Challenge accepted.
Okay. Any other board questions about? I can open to the public if anybody has any questions. I have your station. Not roll call, please? Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Chirico?
Yes.
Mrs. Helford?
Yes.
Mrs. Messick?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Souney?
Yes. Motion passes.
Moving on to finance, begin on page nine and it ends, I believe, on page, sorry. I believe it's page twelve. May I have a motion, please?
Still moved.
Mrs. Brooks?
Second.
And Mrs. Shields. Board discussion.
I signed off on the purchase orders for the board on Monday morning.
Thank you. Anyone else? Now I can open to the public if anybody has a question on finance. Not, may I have a roll call, please? Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Chirico?
Yes.
Mrs. Helford?
Yes.
Mrs. Messick?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Souney?
Yes. Motion passes.
Moving on to policy, may I have a motion, please?
Still moved.
Mrs. Brooks?
Second.
Mrs. Chirico? Turning it over to Mrs. Smith.
Okay, so first we have policy zero, one, five, five board committees, which is being recommended for a first read. As you can see, there were a number of changes made. There's actually something I noticed that I did not notice the first five times. Reading the policy over, but I now see it in the first paragraph at the end, the last word is committee. I believe it should be system, so we can just insert that for next time. So I apologize that I missed that one the first five times. I also recommend, if we think it's necessary to provide a clean copy, but I'm not sure that it was that challenging. So I'd gladly welcome feedback on that, just so that we have one copy that doesn't have the crosshairs on it, because there was a lot that was changed in this policy.
I would agree. I think, you know, the crosshairs were, it's needed to be seen that there were lots of changes, but having it flow. So what I did was I copied and pasted and created my own. But I think perhaps in the Friday update, if the board can get a copy, that would be a great idea. Does that, do you want to entertain any questions on the policy from zero, one, five, five?
Sure. There was one more thing I just wanted to share. I know we had some questions about some of the language the last time that we were discussing this as a whole board. Is the consensus of the policy committee that we should ask Strauss Zesny what their intent was with the conduct studies language? Not only might it help to clarify, because we are including it in here in stating that committees are not authorized to take action, conduct studies, or investigations. But it might also help if they haven't looked at it in many years, that it might be something that decided that needs to get changed. And it could end up benefiting other school districts as well. So that's something that the policy committee was asking for. How does the board feel about that?
As a member of the policy committee, I do support that. I think we can help another district though, because perhaps Strauss Zesny is working on interstate mandates, and then I'd be looking at smart cane language that might be helpful.
I see it a different way. I see it as almost insulting for our attorneys who have already told us that board members do not conduct investigations. I don't think it's our job to tell Strauss Zesny to bring something to their attention. They're professionals too. This is my opinion, but I'm going to open it up to the board, because right now you have some people who want it and some people who don't. So I need a board discussion on this one.
Our attorneys help Strauss as a policy?
Yes.
Again, I go back to Strauss Zesny, because boilerplate policies. Our attorneys have our best personal interests at hand, so I don't see any.
Mrs. DeCarlo? I'm okay with the policy and the way it is it's written. I just like to understand the rationale, that's all. Because I'd like to understand why they make decisions, period, about why, who makes decisions. Strauss, right? So it's different than our lawyers and what they're recommending. I would just like to understand why they're different. Just to put in perspective, that's all.
Mrs. Shields?
I kind of agree with Mrs. Helford. I like this how it is. I will go to proof how it's written. But yeah, just, I don't mind what they mean by conduct investigations. But at this point in time, I don't want to see our policy differ from this first read.
Mrs. Chirico?
I'm also in that agreement that I appreciate it, you know, that's not inherently something that I have advocated for. But I am fine with hearing from Strauss Zesny, not that I'm not disagreeing with her, but just why, why, where did it come from?
So does that go right in? I think I would have then, Dr. Chenamian, would you please contact Strauss Zesny and then copy the board on their response?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next policy is three, one, five, nine, teaching staff members' school district reporting responsibilities, which is a mandated policy. As you can see, there are a number of revisions that are added in the mold and strikeouts as well to reflect updates that were made to the law. There was one part on page two of three that the policy committee had a question about regarding the notification requirement. And if it was possible to have it not apply, and it's not, because we know that it's coming right out of the law. That was some information that we saw and was very helpful.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board to the policy committee?
I have a question, but it's not on the policy, so I don't know if I can wait until your business.
Is it regarding policy?
Yes.
Okay, I guess.
Then I'm fine with it. It's not on these policy. As I was organizing my papers the past couple of days, I noticed that I had this document from, I think it was to Strauss Zesny. And we got it, it was early in September, and it was regarding the policies requiring annual attention and annual training. And the reason why I'm bringing this up is because once I saw it again, I was like, oh, I remember seeing it. And then the understanding of which policies need to be addressed every year and for what reasons. One thing that is missing from here, I was saying, for a couple of them, is it annually reviewed, the language? Some of the policies have, need to be seen every year, and I think we need to have some kind of checklist for our records, because obviously we have the audit, and I think there's a lot with policies. So not blaming in any way, but there's a lot. If we have a way to frame and organize this and keep this as like a live document. So, okay, when we do this, check off. And I would love to see that, just to keep our sales account, make sure we're going through this. Like, one of the items on our agenda had talked about the memorandum of agreement, which is part of the mandatory things that you need to do. Okay, today we did this. Check. You know, so I think that's an important document that we should need, and I don't want to put more on the policy committee, but I'm asking to maybe consider that. And we had it digitally, and I reported it again to Laura, so maybe she can disperse that to the rest of the committee. But I think it's something we could use for structure to make sure that we're hitting those parts every year, and then everybody knows. And as I go down the list, I was like, oh, we do this, oh, we do this. And a lot of times they're on the agenda. It's nice to know when we're complying for a year.
Yes. Yes.
That's all. Yes, it should be very helpful. Thank you.
And it has been done in the past because of the lack of consistency in the administration. Admittedly, things got a little confused, but we used to abide by HR.
And maybe you can help me figure this out a little bit more too, because this is something, I believe, Dr. Chenamian, he asked for this from Strauss Zesny. So they had it. So I'm wondering why, when, once a year, it's not sent out from them, because we're paying for this service. So I was a little frustrated with that. And one of the things I want to do, I see them at the convention, is ask them why. Because why does it have to be asked for? You're a new board member. You wouldn't necessarily know it's even a possibility. And what I would also like to know more about, we're not contract with them, what else do we have for free? You know, to, we're not going to serve for free, included, to utilize in order to maybe help the structure so that everybody's not like, oh, discovering things.
I believe you have, Dr. Chenamian, well, in your office, there is a copy, or Mrs. DeCarlo, the copy of the actual contract. So you can see what we contacted for. There are different packages as we've experienced throughout. So that's certainly something you can definitely get to see. And in terms of making sure that the policies are the ones that need to be voted upon, it's a combined effort of the administration along with the board. It's not, it's not fully the board responsibility.
Right, and this is a nice.
Absolutely.
Way for every, I like loopers on teachers. I like loopers.
Absolutely.
Exactly what it is. I think it just helps everybody.
Absolutely. Thank you. Anything else on policy?
Yes, we.
Okay.
Any other questions? Go ahead. We have one more regulation that we actually need to have approved, so it's up for a first read. It's regulation one, six, four, two, earned sick leave law. And the changes, there were some minor spacing, things where an extra space might have gotten put in, and that had been modified. But as far as answers, we needed to provide some answers to questions, as this was a new regulation. So on page three, we needed to identify in number two, under letter B, the employer will not. And in number three, the same response will not. We use the policy to inform these answers. Along with the expertise of Mrs. DeCarlo and Dr. Chenamian. We also had another option that needed to be selected on page four. And then this option helped inform the future options. We had selected option one and removed what was extra underneath it, the other choice. In addition, on page six of fourteen, number two, selected May. On page eight of fourteen, option two was selected. And as a result of what we currently do, also option two on the next page was selected as well.
Any questions for Mrs. Smith? Thank you. Thank you. I can open to the public before the board votes on policy. If not, may I have a roll call, please? Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Chirico?
Yes.
Mrs. Helford?
Yes.
Mrs. Messick?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Souney?
Yes. Motion passes.
Moving on to discussion items, old business. Any old business from board? Mrs. Brooks?
I can ask if we could do an audit of where we were board mailized today?
I did provide that at the meeting you were not at. However, and I don't have it again with me, I will tell you that because of our technology, I don't have with me this news. I'll send it to you. I've been checking board mail for many years. However, when we switched over from dot org to dot net, I haven't been able to access my dot org, so it only goes back to July of eighteen. But I did trace back. It seems that there were two months. One, I believe, was April, and one was May, that we had maximum for board mail. Both of those months were because of a personnel issue. And those four emails or board mails all regarded the personnel issue. In all the other months, we had one or none. Compared to three years ago, board mail was the place to go. And if I can ever work with the tech department to see if I can get back to the dot org, I can go back fifteen years. But I can tell you, your reason for asking was to see if, in fact, our attempts at creating more transparency for opening up lines of communication, has it made a difference based upon the board mail? The answer is absolutely yes. It has been reduced to almost nothing. So yes, but I will send you those numbers. I just don't have that paper with me.
Thank you.
No problem. Anyone else? Old business? Mrs. Smith?
So I know I had already mentioned this, but just because this weekend is coming up, where the event is happening, I wanted to just mention it again. As the education foundation lays on, we have the Wizards game, or they have the Wizards Gator, that's coming up on Sunday, just to let you know one more time.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? New business? Mrs. Helford?
I have two things. At first, I just have a comment regarding the strategic plan I attended. And I just wanted to thank these two gentlemen for putting it together. I felt that the process was very collaborative, very open. And I really enjoyed hearing from the community members. But the most part, my favorite part was walking around with stickers. So I need to explain stickers. So.
Did you use all of your stickers?
I used every.
Okay, so you're pleased, so that's good.
Yeah, I think everybody did. I understand. We were divided up into groups, and at each corner of the room, there were words, phrases, and we were asked to comment on them. And then at the end, we did, what do you call that word? Gallery walk, yes, because I keep dropping the word out of the line. A gallery walk, where we all had a sheet of stickers. And we were able to go around and put a sticker next to something that resonated for you. And it wasn't necessarily something that you wrote. And it was really nice to see what visually, what was the priority of the people that showed up. And I really encourage people to come to these events, because I thought it was eye-opening. It was comforting. A lot of times I felt that I had a good read on what people wanted. It was nice to see that confirmed. And then there's a couple of things that I was like, oh, that's interesting. Some people want a reward target. I was like, yeah, I love that idea too, but I know the dollars behind it, so let's fundraise, you know.
And find, and find a location.
And find a location. And I'm like, I would love it, of course. But I felt it was a really good start, and I would just encourage others to come see to the next two. I think it was a great experience. Thank you. And my second, I wanted to ask how the board felt about business cards. I had been going to the different county meetings, I've gone to the state level meetings, and sharing information with people from different boards of education. And the common practice in a lot of what I'm interacting with is they have board. they have board business cards. Basically, their name, the school, their number, and there you go. Very basic regarding that, just as a way to share information with others. At the convention meeting, we're going to be meeting several different people and I would like to be able to share my information easily without them. And one of the things I did remember from the convention last year is we actually didn't, there wasn't business cards with the vendors. We have your badge, they scan it, so they prove that they talk to you. So the only thing I remember, I look back at my email, I'm like, I have like four or five emails on a regular basis from different vendors. And usually it's something silly or boring, something. And if it was anything of significance, I probably would have forwarded, but it wasn't necessarily one of our initiatives, so I just let it drop. But pretty much I would like to, you know, get the feel. I wanted to just print them myself and pay for them myself. I don't want the board to pay for them or the district to pay for them. But I would like to have a uniform card so that we're consistent if, you know.
More discussion?
I had brought this up two months before, I think it's September, and then I just let it drop.
Right, I asked her to bring it up.
Exactly, and I completely forgot it was coming. I know Dr. Genami had just had ones printed. So I know that at least there's a vendor that our district does use based on that. But at least they have some sort of template already. And obviously, we wouldn't have the dead buying information as the administrator, but just swap that out for a board member. I would like it to look uniform. Mrs. Helberg, I go to a lot of trainings and a lot of people want to be able to stay in contact either for break out in Missmore or for whatever. So I personally like it. I can go and print those myself, but I do want it to look like everybody else's. Even if the district has to order them, I would prefer to pay for those myself. I don't want the district to do that.
Comments?
In my business world, we do digital contact cards. So I don't, paper business cards to me are obsolete. So I don't really do that. I would be fine with something like that, but printing that for business card.
How's that look?
Just same way, you scan it, send it, email it, same process. Less likely to get lost. I do a lot of preventions and a lot of things. I don't think I, I've never seen one, I'm just aware of this lately. Hundreds of vendors, I think I made two business cards. And if you ask them what I do with them, they probably took a picture and could map it.
I still like the idea of using a picture.
It's not, it's not, it's a, it's a. My world of marketing and graphic work, we don't, business cards are kind of archaic.
It's more of the individual board members that are looking at, not vendors. So they're still looking.
We can send this over our contact. I should have an email address from our district. We can swap it back in.
So is that a template that?
I can, I'm more than happy to create a digital template for people.
Okay, that was great.
Absolutely. I just, for me and my, like I said, if you print 250 business cards is the minimum you're going to get, you're going to come and pay 50 bucks. And really, how long is it going to take you to be able to 250 business cards? So you do it this way, no harm, no foul, it's instant.
Ask them to 21 dollars just to know. Well, that's great. Do you think you have time to do that before the school board convention?
I can't promise it, but I'm trying my best to create a digital template. I just need to know everyone who wants to tell me what we're looking to have on it.
I came up with something, but I'm sure you could do a better job with this way. And just the basic information, I basically pulled the information off of our website just to be consistent and not the temp person.
So it's just text?
I'll send it over to you.
Nancy, one thing you did mention was you had four or five emails from vendors from last year's convention. And I guess I have a concern with, and it wasn't proofless business card, but with vendors reaching out to individual board members. Is it appropriate? Is it necessary? I mean, an individual board member is not the spokesperson for the board, can't make a decision for the board. And really, those members should be going to administration. So that was just one of those.
They're just sending out their normal marketing, there's nothing.
What to an individual?
But there's no, if there was anything that was regarding any kind of use for it, I would have sent it, but.
But see, should a board member read them, pass them along? Should they go directly to administration?
I think if we find a good idea, we should pass them along to administration, regardless of where that information is coming from, whether it's at the convention, outside of public, or anywhere.
I mean, I picked up flyers when I came home. I gave them to.
Oftentimes, I share everything.
Can you just make sure that when you get involved in doing business cards, if you do have a policy number seven twenty solicitation by vendors, anybody who wants to solicit you says you're a shell voters superintender. So to Mr. Jericho's point about being individually solicited, actually your policy says anything that you get individually actually has to, is a shell of yours. It has to go to your shell voter. So, and I understand collaboration, I understand dialogue. I understand you go to the sports convention. You might speak to somebody who's a board member of a place who's going through a, you're doing a report card overhaul. Sharing information ideas is a good thing, you know, I get that. Just be careful that when you go to support, you're hitting your card out and then you start getting solicited. You actually have policies that says everything has to go to your superintender. Now, that doesn't mean when you speak to the board member for another place to buy that I think I'll bring it out to an annual bar and they have an issue in annual bar regarding whatever it is you're dealing with, having that discussion is good. It's actually why they have sports conventions. Why, it's why the NJAs teachers convention is so that there's collaboration and there's exchange of thought. I don't have a problem with business cards per se. Just be careful because you do have some policies regarding who you're giving it to and what you're getting in return for it. Just a thought. I pulled it up on my phone.
That's technology.
Official business.
Mrs. Shields?
It's a piece of wood. I don't know.
Okay, that's fine. You're all right. Not that it matters to me since I only have a few meetings left. But in this day and age of technology, certainly digitally is a way to get clear of one. Second of all, I don't know of any district, I don't know of any district that doesn't have a board of education webpage. And if a person wants to get in touch with you, our pictures are on the webpage, your email address is on the webpage. Personally, I would have to side with our attorney. I think business cards are dangerous. It can get you where you don't want to go. And personally, I don't see the need for it. Certainly, I thank you because the district should not be paying for that. So thank you. And I believe that the district vendors should not be printing it for us. So it's up, you know, I'm leaving, so you will have to pursue this further. But if you wanted my two cents, I'm against business cards. I don't know where that leaves you, but if you want to go. So I guess, do we need to take a hold of this, sir?
Well, right now I think you're exploring doing a digital bar, which costs nothing. You're then, you're accepting a donation of business cards. But I think fundamentally, which probably our understanding is, if they wanted to do business cards, I think it would be not a good idea that two or three folks have business cards and the rest of you don't have a business card. So I think, you know, if everybody's going to have something, then what's going to be on the business card? So that can be a longer discussion. Your name, it's going to be your policy. Hopefully you will ask it brought down to you. Okay, so it's going to be a school address. Then what phone are you going to be? Your personal cell phone? Are you going to give Eater's personal cell phone? Or are you going to?
Our cell phones.
Oh, Eater's. So then what phone, you know, what, what? So I think the idea is, I think maybe you want to flush it out a little bit. I would say that the board would probably have a discussion. And then if you decide to do it, decide what it is, what it's going to be and everybody, you know, get them. That would be my recommendation. I don't know if you can do all of this tonight. And the school boards convention starts on Monday.
Right, it's not happening anymore.
It's not, that's not far off. That's coming right up. So, you know, I do think you should vet it and continue to think about it. If you think it's a good idea, then, you know, everybody have an understanding what you're put on board. Because it is going to end up being a district representation right here. You know, not to, not to get all crazy American Psycho on everybody. Business card actually is a representation without the school district because you're now representing the district. You want, you know, whatever your, I'm not a graphic designer. I think there's one on the board. But do you want your Rockland township to look, you know, similar to say, how Eater's card looks? So, and I don't know all this, I'm not a graphic designer. What I would say to you is that we should probably flush this idea out. And if you decide to do it for everybody, that would be my suggestion. And then have a decision on it.
So then I would put that, unfortunately, the school boards convention is next week. So it's too late for that. But let's put it on the agenda for the next meeting and have a further discussion. If that's okay with everybody. Any other old business? New business? Mrs. Shields, I know you have new business.
I know. I was invited to speak at PAC 165 Airwork Lake Den yesterday. They were completing their building a federal world requirement and they might be there as an elected board member to discuss our role as board members and how we serve the community.
You did a.
It's like my son's in the truth.
You have connections. That's okay. Thank you for representing the board on that one. I'm sure you agreed in your presentation.
I was hoping it's a patient gets tweeted out, but.
Not a problem. Any other, any other new business? If not, I can open to the public. One second, please. May I have a motion, please?
So move.
Mrs. Brooks. Second. Mrs. Smith. Mr. Alms.
I'm going to sign in because I don't have my business card.
Touche.
He's always one.
It's usually that. Yeah, the Edge Foundation is having their basketball game. Spoiler, we're giving out cowbells afterwards. The RTA cowbells, these will be going hot on eBay afterwards.
The parents are really going to appreciate you.
Yes. It's parent appreciation night.
Oh, I'm sure.
And then also tomorrow night, we have our Meet the Board Candidates night at Lake Telemark Community Club, starting at 6:30 with pizza and soft drinks and 7 o'clock, our program begins. So hopefully see you then. Thank you.
Thank you. Just remind us also of the date of the October. Pumpkin.
October 24th here at 6. It's already sold out. So you guys let us know that you'll be there and we'll make special arrangements.
Got it. Thank you.
Thanks to DDB for coming out.
Anybody else in the public who should address the board? If not, may I have motion to adjourn them at 9:14? Mrs. Shields, Mrs. Jericho, thank you.